Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll go ahead and start with our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation by our city manager.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come asking for your blessings as we gather here tonight for this meeting. Empower us to recognize the ways in which we are blessed and continue to grant us the Spirit of service. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have a presentation just by Ms. Isabel Erma on the Rotary Club. Isabel?
Actually, Mayor, Council, I want to give the floor to our Rotary President. Is she on?
Are you all going to do something for Kika or what?
We're going to do something with the chief.
Huh?
For the chief.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Villarreal and I'm joined by Terry Plata and Lupita Ramirez. We want to thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to be here today. We represent the Rotary Club of Mission and we are a nonprofit organization consisting of community leaders, neighbors, and friends that come together because we have a passion for community service and friendship. One of our models is service above self and I think each one of us can exemplify that in a different way. Our community leaders here, organizations, nonprofit organizations like these, but I think a prime example of that is our law enforcement, our men and women in uniform. And they put on their uniforms every day to protect us, each and every single one of us, so that we may feel safe. So Chief, we ask that you come up here. We have a token of appreciation for you. We want to remind you that we are behind you. We support you. And this was signed by different members of our community at National Night Out this past Tuesday. And it's just a token or a reminder that we are here for you and we thank you for all that you do for our families and the city of Mission.
Yes, I just want to say thank you. We worked well with the Rotary Club for years. They kind of inspired us with the Amanda Longoria Rainbow Room, which they've been sponsoring for years now. And they help us with our Explorer Program and now they're reaching out also with our National Night Out event, which was a great success. Not only, you know, you guys, but obviously a lot of service organizations and our city staff also helps us with that every year. Our Mission Crime Stoppers Board. But thank you. It says a lot to us as far as the Police Department is concerned for your dedication as also and your love and attention to us as police officers. I know that it's kind of been tough for us this past few months, especially not only here but around the country and losing the offices we did in Dallas. And this says a lot about our community and you as a service organizations here in Mission. So from my staff here at the Mission Police Department, all 205 of us, thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
(applause)
Okay. I do want this.
(inaudible) (inaudible) All right. Look over here. And then three, two, one. You do one more. (inaudible) All right. And then three, two, one. Smile. All right. We got it.
Thank you. Thank you. I think this belongs to me now, right?
It does.
All right. What display is here at the Police Department proper? Thank you.
Watch with the edges. Watch with the edges.
(inaudible) 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 All right. And then three, two, one. Smile. All right. We got it.
Thank you. Thank you. I think this belongs to me now, right?
It does.
All right. What display is here at the Police Department proper? Thank you.
Watch with the edges. Watch with the edges.
Um, Chamber of Commerce. Have a report from my Chamber of Commerce.
Hey. Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, sir. On Wednesday, July 27th, we were on hand to help Texas National Bank break ground at their new location on Cherry Road. Thanks to all who were able to come out and a special thanks to Mayor for saying a few words. We really appreciate that. We are excited to see this growth and can't wait to cut the ribbon at their doors once they open. On Saturday, July 30th, the Chamber held its first ever chef's barbecue throw down and car show. We utilized the market square space next to our building and estimate that around 700 people came throughout the fire of our event. We're happy to announce the success of this annual event and look forward to continuing it next year. The feedback from the community has been great and we're looking forward to handing out the five $1,000 scholarships to students from Cherry Land ISD and MCISD. The Chamber and its staff were present during Mission's National Night Out. We were happy to support such an incredible event put together by the Mission Crime Stoppers. Thank you so much, team. And for the second year in a row, our All for the Kids Golf Tournament held in April helped us raise enough funds to provide Mission CISD with 2,000 backpacks to fill with supplies and distribute at its annual Back to School Bash. We value our partnership with Mission CISD and are always too excited to be able to give back to the community and the children of Mission. This Wednesday, August 10th, at 10:30 a.m., we will be welcoming new member IIES Language and Tutoring Center with a ribbon cutting. Please come join us at 2575 East Griffith Parkway, Suite 6, to show your support. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have reports in the packet.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Do you all have any questions?
Second, Mayor.
Do we have a motion in the second? Go ahead and approve the reports as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Not having anything to do with our agenda today. Go ahead.
Mayor and City Commission, just to let you all know that I'm Regal Villarreal and I manage the Saldoza International Bridge and the Macanay Dogo International Bridge. And today we had our first test run of an 18-wheeler. Went very well. Their extra equipment is working well, so probably in the next couple of days we'll start commence commercial traffic with southbound empties. So I just wanted to inform you all about that.
That started today?
We did the test today, Mayor, and the Mexican State Department and the U.S. State Department is going to exchange some diplomatic notes. That's going to take two or three days and then after that we'll be ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Regal.
Anybody else that would like to address the council? If not, we'll go on to our public hearings and we'll ask Mrs. DeGna to start on 1.1A.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good afternoon. Item 1.1A is a public hearing. This is for rezoning of all of lots 1 through 9, Block 212, Mission original town site. The request is from R1 Single Family Residential District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. The applicant is Sonia M. Trevino. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve it. On July 27th of 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located along the east side of Quica de Lagarza Loop between 13th and 14th Street. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the C2 Neighborhood Commercial zoning. Staff is recommending approval and is our city manager as well. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? This is the building. Has it been checked? Have they turned the building down or are they using the same building?
It's a, it's a, they're using the same building, Mayor, for a gym.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
A motion in the second to go ahead and approve the request and also adopt ordinance 4381. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against motion carries. Are you checking with the Health Department on this building?
Yes, sir.
Pesticide, everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item B?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1B is also a public hearing. This is for rezoning for Lot Number 6, Nobert Estate subdivision. The, this, the request is from Agricultural Open Interim to R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Durly F. Guerra and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning. On July 27th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located 500 feet east of Benson Palm Drive along the north side of West Can Lane. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the R1 zone. Staff recommends approval as well as does our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request?
I have a quick question, Mayor. What is the?
Any other questions?
Just, can you go back to the, the, the other one? The yellow line? What is that?
It's the city limits, Mayor Protem. It's, we annexed this area in 2013 and when the city annexes property, it's zone agricultural open interim until it's changed by the property owner or city initiated by the city.
So the new line is the red dash?
The, the yellow is the city limits.
And the red one?
And the red one?
And the red line there, that is, I believe it's a, it's a canal or a structure. It's a existing, just like drainage way.
Runway?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So the yellow is the city limits, is this outside of the city?
I'm sorry, no, the yellow is, is, is the-
I think you need to update the map, Dan.
Yes.
If what you're saying is correct, we need to update that yellow line.
Correct.
And it has been annexed, so it's inside the city limits of Mission.
Yes, ma'am.
Not too long ago, the, the street was dedicated to the city of Mission.
Yes, ma'am.
But is the top part south or is the top part north?
On the, the-
On the-
So my, my guess is that, that hash, the, the red one is the new line.
Right.
Is the new city limit line.
It's the yellow.
This one.
The yellow is the new one. We'll update the exhibit, Mayor.
Why don't you bring it back later on?
Okay.
With the correct line? I don't think the yellow line is correct.
Okay, Mayor. You can do that if-
You don't think it's correct, right?
No, the, the, it's inside the city limits. The yellow line is, is, is correct. Yes, sir.
You have a correct line?
Yes, sir.
Is the upper frame north or south?
The upper, everything that you see in the yellow is, and Benson Palm Drive, can you point with a mouse, Ham?
Yeah, but I'm talking about the legend, the legend of it. On the, on the top part, is that north or south?
That's north.
That's north?
Yes, sir. Uh huh. That's north. Benson Palm Drive runs north and south and West Can is east and west.
So would it, it would be inside our city?
Yes, sir. It is, inside the city limits.
We can put a legend?
Yes, sir. We'll do that. I apologize for the confusion on the map, but this is inside the city limits and they want to build one single-family home. That's it. There's existing, so, single-family residences there and the applicant is just going through the process to get a rezon, residential.
So-
Mayor, I move that we approve if the public hearing is closed.
Second.
So your motion is what?
The motion is to approve the, the rezoning of A01 to R1. That's my motion and if the public hearing is closed.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve. They request also to adopt the ordinance 4381. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, just before we move on, if, if that area is subdivided, which it looks like it is, and it is single-family residential, I think that we should go ahead and rezon the whole area.
Yes, ma'am.
R1 instead of them coming in one at a time.
Okay.
Actually, it indicates that it might have already been plotted.
Yes, the property is subdivided already. It's just the zoning is agricultural at the time because of the annexation.
Right.
But we, we can certainly do that if the mayor would like us to, and the council would like us to do that, to rezone all of the lots in that subdivision residential.
Right now, the current zone, Mayor, and the current use is R1. All the lots there are single-family.
Okay, so what are we doing here?
Right now, we're just looking at the one lot.
The, the current zoning is AOI.
Correct.
So we need to, we need to move forward and, and zone the whole area, R1.
At a later meeting, yes. Right now, we're looking at just one, this one lot.
Right.
Is that a subdivision or what?
It's a subdivision, yes, sir, Mayor.
Can you record it?
Yes, sir.
But it was recorded outside the city, Mayor.
Correct.
So now it's inside the city. Now we need, just need to, to zone it appropriately to admit, to match each individual lot that is there.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Are those heavily classed?
Uh, no, Mayor. They're a little bit, the lot sizes are a little bit smaller than half acre.
Ninety-five by 125.
Lot size, it measures, it's 13,500 square feet.
Yeah. 135 by 100?
It's a 135 by 100.
100 in front, 135.
What are you doing about septic tanks?
At, at this time on that property, we're looking at the streets and drainage and as far as water, there's water off of Benson Road Sewer. We're looking into that as well. I know Mr. Terrazas and Mr., we've been out there, Mr. Terrazas and Mr. Salinas, Robert Salinas, we've been out there. So we're looking at the sewer for the, for the property as well.
But what do you have right now? What do you have with the subdivision?
The subdivision, it has septic tanks.
Although?
Yes, the, there's 20 lots. Seven are vacant right now and the rest are on septic tanks.
When was the subdivision approved?
It was back in the 70s, that, it was approved back in the 70s, outside the city limits and the city annexed it in 2013.
Our CCN?
It's a, I don't recall off the top of my head. I believe it's Aqua Sud CCN.
So you're gonna-
Right now, yes, sir. Go ahead.
And the ones that don't have septic right now, what are you going to do with them?
Uh, the ones that do not have septic tanks, yeah. The vacant lots?
When they come in for them?
They would need to come before to get a variance unless we, we'll look at getting the sewer to them.
But what are you going to do? What are you going to do with those empty lots? Are we going to approve them?
Uh, yes, sir. At this time, there, it's a recorded subdivision and, and the council accepted the road right away. We're looking at drainage improvements and we're, based on the annexation plan, we have five years to provide water, sewer, and any infrastructure needs out there. So we're still within the five years and we are looking at providing the sewer.
Now, no?
Yes, but as far as it being in the city limits, we annexed it in 2013, Mayor. We'll look at it to make sure-
Well, don't look at it anymore. Just don't approve any septic, any lots.
For construction.
You're not have acres. You're not supposed to, just against the law, to, to have a septic tank for a lot that doesn't have-
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
And the only way you're going to put septic tanks there.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
You're not going to put septic tanks on those more lots.
Right. Okay. Yes, sir, Mayor.
So does everybody, everybody know that?
Yes, sir.
The model subdivision rules, yes, sir. We'll do that.
Don't work on it anymore.
I understand. Yes, sir.
Don't do it. Okay.
Item 1.1C is also, it's a public hearing, Mayor, for a conditional use permit for home occupation, for licensed home daycare at 2114 West 42 and 1/2 Street. This is Lot 12, Torres Estates, Number 9, Subdivision Phase 2. The current zoning is R1. The applicant is Selena Garcia and this would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 27th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located near Anita Street and West 42nd and 1/2 Street at the intersection on the north side of West 42nd and 1/2 Street. At the public hearing, there was no public opposition during the meeting. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for one year and staff is recommending approval for one year as well as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you. It's for a daycare.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not?
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit and adopt ordinance 4382. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. In this position, the minutes we had on the city council meeting on July the 25th, 2016, we do need some, we didn't need a motion to approve-
So moved, Mayor. Second.
A motion and second to approve the city council meeting. Minutes, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Also to acknowledge the meetings that we had by our boards, Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Advisory Board. On April the 20th, 2016, the Mission Historical Museum had a board meeting on June the 20th of 2016, Planning and Zoning Commission on July the 11th of 2016. We do need a motion to acknowledge-
I so moved to acknowledge, Mayor. Second.
A motion and second to acknowledge the minutes, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.1, Mr. Tejina, preliminary plat approval.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. It's a preliminary plat approval for Stewart Gardens North subdivision, being a 2.9 acre tract of land out of Lot 271 John H. Sherry subdivision. The current zoning is R1A, large lot, single-family. The developer is Michael Broden and his engineer is Javier Nohosa Engineering. On July 27th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission convened and approved the preliminary and final plat approval for Stewart Gardens North subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located approximately 1/2 mile north of Griffin Parkway along the east side of Stewart Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendations. What we have here, Mayor, are nine large lot, uh, uh, single-family lots that are 80 by 178 feet or about 14,000 square feet. And as you could see in the routing, we have our fire marshal, our city engineer, and our public works director all in approval, recommending approval. P&amp;Z's recommending approval. City manager's recommending approval. Staff's recommending approval. Preliminary plat approval of the subdivision.
Need a motion to approve the preliminary plat?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Motion and second to approve the plat, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.2?
Thank you, Mayor. Final, item 4.2 is a final plat approval. This was formerly known, this is El Legado subdivision, formerly known as Hartfield Estate subdivision. This is a 10.95 acre tract of land out of Lot 261 John H. Sherry subdivision. The zoning is R1A, single-family, large lot. The developer is Heartland and Cattle LLC. The engineer is SJS Engineering. On April 14th, 2014, the city council convened and approved the preliminary plat for El Legado subdivision, formerly known as Hartfield Estate subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located approximately a quarter-mile north of Griffin Parkway along the east side of Stewart Road. The city council unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendation. Now before you is the final plat approval. We have 30 single-family square, uh, single-family lots here and that are going to come into the city of Mission. Staff is recommending approval, subject to approval of the variance request to have the subdivision private and gated, complying with the private street ordinance, paying the park capital sewer recovery and reimbursement fees to the city of Mission, providing an escrow for Stewart Road widening and the five-foot sidewalk. And also they, they have to widen their portion of the drainage to the east and they must provide proof of exclusion from the water district and compliance with all other format findings. As you can see there in the routing, we do have signatures from our fire marshal, our public works director, and our city engineer. We are all recommending approval of this final plat. This, this matters now before you, Mayor.
Need a motion to approve the plat?
More to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
4.3?
Yes, Mayor. Item 4.3 is approval of ordinance number, men, I'm sorry?
4383.
4383, Mayor, amending Chapter 98, which is our subdivision ordinance of the city of Mission Code of Ordinances by adding Section 98-148, Designating Honorary Street Names and Establishing Guidelines for This Designation. The city of Mission receives requests from time to time to designate honorary street names. The attached ordinance is a recommendation that will establish a policy with criteria for these types of requests. What you have in the ordinance, Mayor, is something that would be added to the subdivision ordinance where these requests would come before the, to the planning department and be taken to the planning commission and then be brought to the city council. And the procedures and the process itself is outlining the ordinance, so we are presenting this to you and the city council for your review and approval. If you have any questions, please let me know.
The ordinance should be 4383?
Yes, sir.
Do need a motion to approve the ordinance?
I just got a question. Did you highlight the changes?
I'm sorry?
Did you highlight the changes or recommendations that we're doing?
Uh, this is brand-new, Councilman. It's a, a brand-new outline to the, that's going to be 98-148 will be added, it's in its entirety to the subdivision ordinance. So everything is brand-new.
Yes, Mr. Plata, and I think you're talking about the changes we spoke about in the workshop. Uh, yes, if you look at the, the recommendation is an honorary name. So I think one of the concerns was the mailing addresses for the bills and, you know, the residents and so forth. So as an honorary name, the people will keep their same mailing address. I know that was one of the major concerns.
Thank you.
So we do have a motion?
Second.
Second to approve ordinance 4383. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.4? Approval Resolution 1468? Approval of resolution 1468.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.4 is a resolution of the City Council for the City of Mission amending resolution number 1407, amending the public funds investment policy and strategy. As per chapter 2256 of the Texas Government Code, known as Public Funds Investment Act, the city is required to adopt the investment policy and strategy on an annual basis through resolution. No changes were made to the policy. Staff recommendation is approval of resolution.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second to approve resolution 1468, amending for number 1407. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
4.5, Ms. Lerma. Resolution 1468, 69.
Mayor and Council, I come before you. The agenda item is the approval of resolution declaring the adoption of the municipality of Carmona in the province of Seville, Spain. The nature of the request would be for the approval to declare the adoption of the municipality of Carmona in the province of Seville, Spain, as a sister city and authorizing Mayor Salinas to act as the official representative of Mission to carry out this program. Mr. Juan Manuel Avila Gutierrez, who is the mayor of Carmona, will be visiting the states here in the next couple of weeks. We've received word that he will be in Mission on August the 22nd. They are seeking to become sister cities with the City of Mission, and this request is to recommend that we honor the, their, their request.
So the request is for them to, um, they're gonna be here on the 22nd or 23rd?
22nd.
What we're doing here today is, um, no, give us, given us notice that they will be here, and they have an idea of trying to get a sister city in the province of Sevilla, Spain. So we do need to approve resolution 1469, declaring the adoption of the.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and second to approve resolution 1469? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
4.6. Joanne.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Item 4.6 is for approval of amendment for consolidated plan 2013-2017. The purpose of the consolidated plan 2013-17 is to help assess housing and community development needs, set goals and priorities, and allocate funds to address the needs of the community. This plan is carried out through the action, the annual action plan, which identifies activity funding that will be used each year to address needs and goals identified in the consolidated plan. On June 26, 2016, city council approved Salvation Army as an agency that would receive CDBG funds to help address at-risk homeless. However, Salvation Army was not included in the original consolidated plan. Therefore, this request will allow us to allocate the agency $2,000 for this purpose. Other revisions include goals for other public services for general activities that do not have a specific goal. As required by HUD, a public hearing was held July 12, 2016, to solicit input and provide a 30-day comment period. No comments were received during those 30 days. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the amendment for consolidated plan 2013-2017, as so is the citizen advisory board and city manager's recommendation.
Okay, what's, what are we doing here? We are amending?
The consolidated plan, which sets the goals for the, for the CDBG funding.
What are the changes that we're gonna have?
Is, it's on page 132. We're actually only identifying the goals, which is on page 132. The goals that we're gonna add is for substance payments will allow us to, to reimburse funds to Salvation Army. Salvation Army will be helping at-risk homeless families that reside in the City of Mission.
Okay.
So that, to prevent homelessness, to, to prevent them from losing their.
The plan is to go ahead and amend the, the plan that we have?
Is to amend the consolidated plan.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, I'm on death.
Mayor, if I, if I may.
Please.
What we're doing today is we're amending the consolidated plan. And back in June, we adopted different agencies that we're gonna provide assistance to, one of them being the Salvation Army. So the Salvation Army is going to give vouchers, money, to be able to provide for the homeless. However, the consolidated plan does not give us the ability to help the homeless. So we're amending that plan to be able to facilitate the monies that Salvation Army is gonna be using to provide that assistance.
Have you checked with this, has the committee, I mean, our advisory committee allowed this?
Yes, sir. They did. We did meet on July 12.
They, they, they agreed to, to fund this?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. O'Kanya.
Are the vouchers gonna be used in the City of Mission?
Yes, sir.
Area only?
Mm-hmm.
And the other one is, because of the amendment, I know in the consolidated plan, we had actual allocations of funds?
Yes.
Is, are you transferring any, or how, how is this funding?
No, it was already approved.
Right, it's the same funds that we approved in June. The same funds that we allocated for Salvation Army are the same funds that are gonna be used. However, the consolidated plan is to be amended to be able to use it for that type of assistance, and that's what we're doing today.
Because all we do is approve a few, and everything else is used for housing?
Yes, everything stays the same. The only thing we're gonna allow is.
You're spending, most of them is how much?
$2,000.
$2,000 a year?
Only for this one year, for 2016.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second to go ahead and approve the amended, um, the amended for consolidated plan of 2013-2017 explained by?
Salvation.
Yes. By Ms. Longoria. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
4.7.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Item 4.7 is requesting authorization to execute a reimbursement agreement between the Mission Redevelopment Authority and the City of Mission. Uh, this agreement is related to the Mission Event Center project and the TURS's commitment to reimburse the City of Mission an amount not to exceed $500,000 annually for the life of the TURS or the life of the debt.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Your, your, otherwise, Mayor. How much are your, your redevelopment?
The authorization, or, um, the commitment will be $500,000 a year for the life of the TURS.
Okay, well, that's, that sounds better than, I mean, just, just approving the, the request that this, you need to give me a dollar figure because I missed the dollar figure. It's 500,000?
$500,000 a year, yes, sir.
Very good. You're, you're transferring that to, um, within the Mission Redevelopment Authority?
Yes, so we'll, we'll reimburse the, the city from the Mission Redevelopment Authority, $500,000 a year.
Okay. Somebody understood that, what we're doing here?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion?
More to approve.
Second.
A second to go ahead and authorize the reimbursement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
4.8, Mr. Pettis.
Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.8 is the approval of ordinance. On April 28, 2016, Texas Gas Service filed a rate increase pursuant to cost of service adjustment tariff adopted by the Royal Grand Valley Service area cities. Texas Gas Service claimed an entitlement of rate relief under the tariff in the amount of $1,791,783 on a system-wide basis. The attorney and consultant reviewed the Texas Gas Service filing and negotiated a settlement, agreed, and recommended a settlement of $1,491,783 on a system-wide basis. The settlement discussion resulted in Texas Gas Service agreeing to reduce their request by 300,000. So the, the rate increase will be the following, on an average monthly customer bill residential of 65 cents and commercial of $15.02. That's the, um, the approval of an ordinance.
Any hope of reducing it?
That, that was a reduction, Dr. O'Kanya. Uh, we did have the attorneys who represent the coalition of all the cities, and they were able to save us only, you know, 300,000 based on what they were requesting. So if we look at the impact of what we're, residents going to have is their bill is gonna increase by 65 cents for resident, and for a commercial, it would be $15.02. That's what they're gonna see in their bill at the end of the day.
This is the, this is the, the.
Texas Gas.
Texas Gas with the cities?
Yes.
The coalition that we have in?
Yes, sir.
And only 300,000 is, is the only, the only amount of money that we were able to?
To save, Mayor. Yes, sir. They were asking for 1.7, and we ended up settling at 1.4 million.
So we only saved 300,000, okay. We need a motion to approve ordinance 4384.
More to approve.
We have motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One vote.
Aye.
Two votes, three votes. Four vote, den vote. I will vote for, with the group. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've been lazy today. Who are the attorneys that are representing us?
The, the.
Represent the group?
Yes, sir. Uh, the attorney was Jeffrey Gay. He's the, um, the attorney that represents the, the group, yes, sir.
Who, who are they?
Uh, they're out of, uh, it's, the, um, his, the attorney is Jeffrey Gay, and they're out of, uh, I believe they're, uh, from Lloyd Goslink is the firm, and they're out of Austin. And that's who the council that they represent.
Find out how much they charged us and, and?
Well, the, the agreement is based on, um, you know, any, any fees that we incur with the negotiations are reimbursed through Texas Gas Service for the city. So any, any, uh, legal expenses are reimbursed.
Is it part of the 300,000 or is part of the 1.4?
Well, um, it's, it's separate, um, it's, that was the negotiated amount plus any additional legal expenses were reimbursed.
Well, let us ask Mr. Tejera or, or Mr. Flores to go ahead and find out who they are, how much they've been charging us for the last years, how much we were make, how much we were saving years before when we got involved into it. And 300,000 is not very much.
Okay.
And, um, I'd like to see what we can do to, maybe we would have done better on our own.
Okay, we can look into.
And see how much, how much came out of our pocket that necessarily we would have done probably better.
Okay.
Uh, McAllen usually does very good for us, and apparently 300,000 is, is not really a, a very good number, so. We'll go into item 4.9 now.
Yes, sir. Um, item 4.9 is, um, the annual write-off uncollectible, uh, utility accounts receivable for the first quarter of 2015. Attached for your review, the approval, the summary of the amounts to be written off at this time. These amounts are for the three months of, uh, the period of January 2015 through March 2015, and the amount of $22,113.
So moved, Mayor.
This is the uncollectible. We have a motion and second to go ahead, not really write them off, but to put them aside.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. A motion and second to go ahead and, the word would be, um, not write off, but un, un, what would be the other word that we can use instead of write off?
They're submitted to the collection agency.
Agency, right?
The collecting agency and, okay, so let's not use the word write off anymore.
Okay.
Because it really gives the public a, um, a wrong idea that maybe they don't have to pay their bills because we'll write them off.
Yes, and, and that balance remains in their account, so anytime they wanna open a new account, we charge them for the outstanding balance before they connect.
Okay, good.
And that's 22,000, right?
Yes, sir, that's, that's true.
You know more or less how many accounts is that?
Uh, not, not at this time, sir.
They'll come back, it's really, they, they always, always come back and, and, and for services, and this is where you.
That's when they get charged.
Yes, and that's where we.
That's where you really get charged.
Yes, we regain the, the.
So, so some people might not have the money, but later, later in life, they, they come back and, and they make up for what they owe us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, 410.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. I come before you seeking authorization to declare surplus and donate used washers, dryers, refrigerators to the Mission Volunteer Firefighters Club, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. The Mission Fire Department is seeking approval to declare surplus and to donate several appliances that are no longer working to the Mission Volunteer Firefighters Club, a 501(c)(3) organization, whose sole purpose is to raise funds to support the Mission Fire Department. The items listed on the asset transfer form are two refrigerators, three washers, and one dryer, which have been acquired by the department over the years through purchases and are no longer working, and have been replaced. Staff is recommending that the attached list of appliances be donated to the Mission Volunteer Firefighters Club.
Okay, you have, um, you're gonna declare what surplus?
Two. Declare surplus, uh, two refrigerators, three washers, and one dryer, which are, are irreparable. They, they're no good no more.
And you're going to, um?
Donate them?
Donate that surplus, that's some of the scrap metal.
Who are you gonna donate them to?
To the Mission Volunteer Firefighters Club, donate 501(c)(3).
Mm-hmm. Well.
How much can they?
I, I don't think we can do that, no?
Mr. Mayor, you're correct in that.
I mean, you can, you can just use them. I mean, why do you wanna declare them surplus?
They don't, they don't work anymore.
Wait up, then give them back to, to somebody else, and we'll buy your club new ones. Why would you wanna take the junk over there?
Well, they will sell them as junk and get that money for.
Oh, okay, uh, that's done, you wanna make some money on it, huh?
Yeah, they, they will sell them for junk.
They wanna sell it for scrap metal.
Right, just for the fundraiser.
You know, what, what I've been noticing here is like this, this item's here, it's the refrigerators. They should have a little number that says that belongs to the City of Mission. And every item, and then we should declare the surplus, we should declare that number surplus.
Yes, we do.
And we should not sell them to ourselves anymore, or give them to ourselves anymore, because they're gone. I don't agree with what you want. I'd rather buy you some new ones.
Right.
It's not good practice to be declaring things surplus, and then you take them with you, and then you're gonna go sell them. You're a city employee.
Right.
It doesn't look, it's not the right thing to do.
But this club is not a city.
No, see, mira bien, I don't care how, what you, how you paint it. It's not gonna look. Sooner or later, that refrigerator is gonna be sold to somebody that doesn't like you, and they're gonna come and tell us. And then we're gonna have to tell the chief.
The mayor and the council understand that they are a 501(c)(3), however, they're still city employees, even though they're part of a nonprofit, and I think that's, that's what we're trying to say.
We'll buy them new ones.
And we have. We bought, we replaced these already.
Let's not do business with these ones, because it's, it's, it's not in the best interest of the club and of the city. We'd rather just go ahead and declare them surplus and let somebody take them away, right? I don't think it's good. It's a good idea for you to do.
As wish, yes.
Of course, it's up to the city council if they wanna go ahead and do that.
I, I would like to ask Legal for the advice that he was going to say, but go ahead and, and.
Ordinarily, the, the city can, can declare surplus, and you, the city cannot donate. Um, however, if the donation is for a public purpose that's gonna come back to the City of Mission, then it's permissible. And so the only way that this comes back to the City of Mission, my understanding is that this 501(c)(3) raises funds to support the Mission Fire Department, and so they were, if their sole purpose is to raise funds for the Mission, in support of the Mission Fire Department, then that, that becomes permissible. But again, it, it becomes whether the council wishes, wishes to do that or, or not. I mean, it's really up to the council.
What is your recommendation?
As far as a legal recommendation, I mean, it, it's legally permissible if the public purpose is to return to the City of Mission. If, if this organization raises funds simply to support.
Like the mission, no.
Then, then yes, it's legally permissible. However, it, it becomes up to the council whether you wish to take that action.
There are items that are being declared surplus.
Correct.
Uh, and, and I don't know why we wanna deal with them. Just sell them to the, to, to somebody that has no connection with our city. Maybe they don't even work.
They don't work, right?
No, they don't work.
How much money do you think they'll give for this?
Scrap metal, 50 bucks, maybe.
I don't think, I don't think this item is worth us discussing for 50 dollars. I mean, that's my personal opinion. I don't think it should be brought out to the council.
Sooner or later, they're gonna, somebody's gonna start a little rumor that you came here to declare them surplus, and you gave them to the club, and then you sold them and kept the money, and didn't give them to the club. Why would you wanna have those problems for?
I see.
You know what I mean?
Yes, I see.
I mean, como esta el mundo ahorita, te acaban en tres minutos, bro.
Okay.
Okay, so what is your intent, chief?
To surplus them. We're surplus right now.
I make a motion to surplus the, the items only, Mayor.
Mm-hmm, and we'll decide later what to do with them.
I second that motion to surplus the items.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and declare the item surplus?
We have to do that, right?
Provided Legal allows us to, to, to do that portion.
Let's not, let's not give the legal. Let's not, let's not give the legal any more, any more work, he's gonna charge us more money then.
(laughing)
And that's, that's gonna start a, 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 you're already spending money on something that is being declared surplus. Okay, we have a motion and a second to declare surplus?
Mayor, the motion also indicates, uh, that, uh, to authorize, uh, to declare surplus and to follow city policy for, for disposal. If, uh, if, uh, the city manager has, uh, 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 the online deal or whatever we do-
Government online, yeah.
Follow city policy.
I second that motion, that's, that's the procedure that we currently have in place, correct?
That's correct, sir.
And, and let's go ahead and start something today that any item, any, anything owned by the city chief supposed to have a little number, and we're so, always supposed to know where that item is at.
Yes, sir.
It would, I, I know why I'm telling you, because we need to have a record of everything that we have.
The inventory tech number that you've shown, page one seventy-two, what is that?
Well, but this, these items are not in the inventory list. I guarantee you that, because they don't have a number. But I want everything that the city purchases to have a number. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Four twelve?
Four eleven, Mayor.
Four eleven, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Four eleven is the approval of memorandum of understanding with Mission C I S D in regards to the use of the Sherri Municipal Golf Course. The city of Mission and Mission C I S D have developed a memorandum of understanding where the parties agree to the following. The city agrees to provide driving range privileges and playing privileges to the two high schools for the 2016-2017 school year, so, dated September first, 2016, to May thirty-first, 2017, on the days that Sherri Golf Course is regularly open. We also will provide driving range privileges and playing privileges for all four of the junior high schools for the period of March first, 2017, to May thirty-first, 2017, on the days that the golf course is regularly open. Mission C I S D agrees to pay the city of Mission the sum of fourteen thousand dollars after the signing of this M O U. If there are no questions, staff recommendation is for approval of the memorandum of understanding.
I move for approval.
Second.
This is for free?
No, that pays fourteen thousand dollars.
For the whole?
For the entire school year, yes, sir. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
I, I have a question, if you don't mind, Mr. Flores, uh, any particular reason why it says March the first instead of September the first?
That is for the junior highs, and their season, that's when it begins, in March.
That's when it begin?
Yeah, and I think it's after swimming or, and something like that. So, that, that's when they start, and they run four or five tournaments until the end of May.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir?
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item four twelve?
Item four twelve is the approval of the golf club storage agreement with Mission C I S D and the Sherri Municipal Golf Course. The city of Mission and Mission C I S D have developed an agreement where the parties agree to the following. The city agrees to provide an area designated under the Sherri Municipal Golf Course clubhouse for the storage of golf clubs and bags, which can be secured. Golf course employees will not have access to unlock said storage area, and the basement area will be open from seven A.M. to the closing of the clubhouse. The Mission C I S D agrees that only school coaches will have a key to access the cage area, ensure no student is allowed in the area without a coach present, and inform students and parents that only the coach has a key, and the golf course employees do not have access to said area. If there are no questions, staff recommendation is for the approval of the golf club storage agreement. It doesn't cost them anything, it's just a, an added benefit that we provide for them.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and second to go ahead and approve the, um, golf club storage agreement at no cost to, to the schools, all those in favor signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Four thirteen is the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Sherri Land School District in regards to the use of Sherri Municipal Golf Course. The city of Mission and Sherri Land I S D have developed a memorandum of understanding where the parties agree to the following. The city agrees to provide driving range privileges and playing privileges to the two high schools for the 2016-2017 school year, dated September first, 2016, to May thirty-first, 2017, on the days that the golf course is regularly open. We will also provide driving range privileges and playing privileges to the two junior high schools for the period of March first, 2017, to May thirtieth, 2017, on the days that the golf course is open. Sherri Land agrees to pay the sum, the city of Mission, the sum of fourteen thousand dollars at the signing of this M O U. Uh, we actually, um, combined the two districts together, so they're both paying the same amount. We had Sherri Land on a per player, now they're just a lump sum as well as Mission C I S D. So, there's no question.
So, the other one was just Mission High School, not Memorial, right?
This is Sherri Land School District?
I mean, the, I mean, I'm going back to the one in-
Yes, sir, the previous one was just Mission Consolidated Independent School District?
Correct.
And the one we're doing now is for Sherri, Sherri Land I S-
Which would be Pioneer and, and Sherri Land.
You're doing it for the two high schools in Mission?
And the junior highs.
And the junior highs, yes.
And the junior high, and Sherri Land?
Same thing, they just have less junior highs.
But you only have one high school?
There's two, Pioneer, the, the one-
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I thought that was, uh, okay.
Yeah.
All those-
So move, Mayor.
The motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries.
We already approved the, the Sherri Land, uh, uh, storage also, right? And it has the same requirements?
That would be the item four fourteen, yes.
There's the same requirement, that the coaches will only have the-
Correct.
-key, and our city personnel will not.
Same, same, exact same, yes, very same verb.
Thank you.
Okay, so four fourteen is the approval of the golf club storage agreement with Sherri Land School District and Sherri Municipal Golf Course. Again, we agree to provide that same area with the cage underneath the Sherri Municipal Golf Course clubhouse. We will not have the key, and we'll be open from seven A.M. to the closing of the clubhouse. Sherri Land I S D agrees that only the coaches will have the key, uh, ensure no student is in the area without the coach present, and inform the students and the parents of the students that only the coach has a key, and that the golf course employees do not.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and second to go ahead and approve the golf club storage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Okay.
Item four fifteen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four fifteen is authorization to declare items as surplus and sell by online auction. Staff is seeking approval to declare attached list of items as surplus. Items have been acquired by the library over the years through purchase, contribution, or donation assignment. All items have been determined to be of no use to the library.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Here again, you have the authorization to declare items for surplus. We don't know what items you're declaring surplus. If you-
It's a detached-
I, I attached, uh-
Well, I don't have, I mean, for us to have it on record-
Was it page one eighty?
We have it on an agenda, but not, we don't have them on-
Okay, I, I, I will make sure to get it-
It's, it's on a package, but I'll provide one separately for each council member next-
And the thing is, see, we can start working on those numbers for every one of the things that's-
Some of my items do have asset numbers, if they're over two fifty, then some of the equipment is minor equipment, so those items don't have an asset number. But some of them do have it.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and declare item surplus?
Yes, sir.
And to sell it online. And to sell it online.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, uh, my, uh, good afternoon, Mayor, uh, City Council members. I come before you seeking approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement with Palm Valley Animal Center for the operation of a regional animal shelter. From nineteen eighty-six through September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, the city of Mission has entered into, interlocal agreements with Palm Valley Animal Center, in which animals that are in need of, to be quarantined, are delivered to the Palm Valley Animal Center, and in some cases, animals are also transported to the center to relieve overcrowding of our canals, the city canals. The partnership, uh, with Palm Valley Animal Shelter will allow the city of Mission to increase awareness of a regional animal shelter, increase pet adoptions, and relieve overcrowding of the city canals. Staff recommendation is approval of interlocal cooperative agreement. Again, uh, one of the changes, uh, from this contract is that, uh, the cost per animal to ta- be taken to the Palm Valley Animal Center changed, uh, from a hundred and ten dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars. And the amount that we use throughout the years is, uh, not, not more than five thousand dollars, meaning that only around forty to fifty animals will be transported to the, uh, Palm Valley Animal Center.
And that's also because we did, uh, adopt a new program, Mayor, which is the Adopt a Pet, and so, we do that advertising through our website, we've been doing very well, I think, I don't know how many either of you have, how many pets we've adopted, but, uh, been doing that for about over a year now. It's worked out for the city of Mission.
It's working out?
Yes.
Second, Mayor.
Motion and second to go ahead and approve the interlocal agreement with Palm Valley Animal Center, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. Mayor-
One seventy.
Mayor of City Council, on the next agenda item, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to accept the 2015 Stone Garden Grant from the County of Hidalgo through the Office of the Governor's Criminal Justice Division. The grant authorizes disbursement of the 2015 Stone Garden Grant Funds to the Mission Police Department, and set all guidelines to be followed. The total amount of the grant award for the city of Mission Police Department is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A total of a hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred will be utilized to pay overtime for police officers working the, of Stone Garden operation, and the remaining a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred will be utilized to purchase three new patrol vehicles. We're requesting again authorization to accept the grant.
Second, Mayor.
A motion and second to go ahead and accept the grant? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Four eighteen?
On this item, Mayor of City Council, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to re-enter into an interlocal agreement for the Educational Resource Officer Program between the city of Mission and the Mission Consolidated Independent School District for the 2016-2017 school year. A total of seven officers will be assigned to the school district during the school year. The total amount of the interlocal agreement is three hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-one and seventy-three cents. Staff is recommending a favorable recommendation for the purpose of continuing the Educational Resource Officer Program at Mission C I S D.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second to go ahead and approve, um, the authorization to re-enter into the same agreement that we had before, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Item four nineteen?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four point nineteen is the authorization to execute second one-year renewal option for pre-employment screenings. On ten twenty-seven of 2014, the city of Mission approved a contractual agreement with the Center of Industrial Rehabilitation Services for pre-employment screening services. Pre-employment screenings include drug screening, physical, and preplacement screening for potential hires. The contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options. Per attached renewal letter, there will be no increase in rates for the second one-year renewal. Staff is recommending authorization to execute the second one-year renewal.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second to go ahead and authorize to execute second one-year renewal.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Naimi, I wanted to see, how often do we use these services, like for, to test for drug and alcohol screening on our employees?
With everyone that we job offer?
At the beginning?
Yes, at the beginning. This is for just strictly pre-employment.
Okay, and so, do we have another company that does during the employment?
Uh, that was, Risk Management has another company for the-
Random.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item four twenty?
Hi, it's Mayor Council, I do have item four point twenty. This is a discussion and action on the proposed 2016 tax rate and take record vote and schedule the public hearings. Uh, in accordance with the Texas Property Tax Code, uh, city council must propose a tax rate for the city of Mission and publish notice of property tax rate by September the first. And if the proposed tax rate is lower than the effective tax rate, then only one public hearing is required to adopt the tax rate. If the proposed tax rate is higher than the effective tax rate, then we're gonna need two public hearings. Uh, right now, the calculation from the Hidalgo, uh, Preso District has been on the effective tax rate was, uh, zero point four nine six two for one hundred valuation. Our calculated, uh, rollback tax rate, uh, was zero point six one eighty-three for one hundred valuation, and of course, the current tax rate that we're using right now is, uh, zero point four nine eight eight valuation. So, what the, uh, Preso District is recommending is the effective tax rate, which is zero point zero zero two six less than what we're currently using. So, my recommendation at this moment, Mayor, is to approve the effective tax rate of the point forty-nine sixty-two, uh, per one hundred valuation.
Okay, so that, that would give us a-
This gives us a decrease in property tax of point zero zero twenty-six, which is about a quarter of a penny, that we're reducing taxes.
Lower than what we-
Than what we currently have, which is zero point, uh, forty-nine eighty-eight.
Okay, we need a motion to go ahead and, um-
I move for approval. Second.
Second, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is that the same recommendation that we came into consensus from the budget workshop?
When we did the budget workshop, Dr. Okanya, we were basing ourselves on uncertified tax rules. These are the certified tax rules, these are the effective tax rate that the county is, is recommending based on our M and Os and our debt service, and, um, uh, if you look at the difference of what it is, the zero point zero zero two six, a quarter of a penny, we're talking about a hundred and two thousand dollars. That's the difference.
Which means that, uh, if we accept this rate?
We're actually lowering a quarter of a penny.
I, I understand that part, but, but, uh, are we gonna be able to fund a hundred percent of what the items that we talked about?
Absolutely, sir, it doesn't affect, uh, absolutely, it, it funds other projects and capital projects that we talked about in the, uh, workshop.
Actually, our firm balance will grow a hundred and two thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand?
Well, there's a difference of a hundred and two, but, uh, the, uh, what the effective rate is doing for us is, it's increasing our M and O, and it's, uh, decreasing what goes to debt service, so we're in good hands.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries.
Mayor, I think we have to, we have to have a record vote, Mayor.
That's correct, I'm sorry, that means record vote, uh, each person needs to raise their hand.
Aye.
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 What we currently do at the MPO, we benefit from the Economic Disadvantaged County Program, because we're able to provide service in, in the area of transportation, to bring more streets to our area, and being able to pay a lot less than what we would be paying if we don't have this economic develop, or disadvantaged county program. And so, that is being threatened, it's, it's being threatened by the Texas Department of Transportation, and so, what the MPO doing throughout the county is putting a resolution together to form a delegation, go out to Austin, and be able to continue supporting the Hidalgo County with this type of program, mayor. It will affect our transportation benefits.
Okay, the resol, the resolution number, what's the resolution?
1470.
1470. So do we, with a motion to go ahead and approve Resolution 1470?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to go ahead and approve Resolution 1470. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. But coming back to this item, I think that it's, you were saying earlier that we would probably take care of, it's gonna be okay on, on what we used to have, the 20%?
That's correct. Right, right now, the, the state pays 80%, and municipalities pay 20%, so we wanna make sure that, that we continue with this economic disadvantaged program.
But they wanted to do away with it.
That's correct, they wanna do completely away with that, so that would affect taxpayers' pockets entirely, yes.
422?
Yes, mayor, item 4.22 is an approval of an interlocal agreement, and this is between the Anselduas Bridge Board regarding support services for the proposed international vehicular and rail bridge at the Madero Bridge. And as you know, we do have a joint resolution between the City of McAllen, the City of Hidalgo, and, and the City of Mission regarding the new international vehicular railroad bridge. However, the parties have designated Mr. Rigo Berto Villarreal as liaison to the, to assist in coordinating and facilitating the agreement amongst these entities, and to further provide other support services. This interlocal agreement provides for the payment of the support services.
Yes.
And also, we do have Mr. Rigo Villarreal here present as well.
Rigo?
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go ahead and approve the interlocal agreement with the Anselduas Bridge Board regarding support for the Madero Bridge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, Rigo? Now that you're on board with us, you know, you need to come and see us once in a while.
I submitted a, a very detailed report since the beginning of the activities, I think dated back about a year and a half, remember, Dean?
That's correct.
Along with pictures, notes on different meetings, I think back from April of 2015. So, there's been a lot of work involved, and the progress is, has been faster than what we expected. Our trip to Mexico City, about a month ago, we received an unexpected result, where they're gonna pay for the study instead of us, so that, that rarely happens in, in these type of situations, so we're real happy about that.
Rigo has, so, is gonna start rolling trucks south, starting maybe the next day or so?
Couple of days, mayor, as soon as they get their, their letters exchanged between themselves.
On the, on the, on the Anselduas, well, and that's going to make a big difference for us, carrying trucks going south and, and making some extra money for the Bridge Board. He's also been very, you know, Rigo has been very good about, about working with, with us on the, on the Madero Bridge, and he's hanging on and bringing on some, some, some more work for himself, because this is going to be a cargo bridge only. And we also will be working on the rail, on the rail bridge for, for, for the rail. And he's gonna be involved, and he's gonna have a lot of work for the next three or four years, so I hope that everything comes, comes, does well for us, and we have all the confidence in the world, and we wanna thank you for helping us.
Thank you, mayor.
And Rigo is a resident of Mission, he lives in Mission. So, we wanna thank you, Rigo, for all you do for us, and, and I know that we're gonna be participating, working together for, for these coming, coming years.
Yes, sir.
And we also have already gotten funded for the connection of the bridge from Madero to the expressway, so all we need to do now is put things together, so thank you very much again for everything you do for us.
Mayor, I would like, I would like to share my expectation, if you don't mind, mayor. I just wanna share that make sure that you meet all the deadlines and don't lose our bridge permit.
No, sir. That's the idea.
Make sure we don't lose that, that part, okay?
That's the idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you, Rigo.
We are going to, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, mayor, no comments.
We're going to go into executive session?
Well, mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section 551.001, mayor.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I move we go back into reconvene, second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. You have, 7.1 has no action?
On, mayor, on 7.1A, if the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate and retain outside legal counsel to review the current and proposed water supply contracts.
So moved, mayor.
A motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 7.2A, Mr. Mayor, if the council, there is no action on this item, Mr. Mayor.